I'd like to start the meeting. Point one, apologies for absence received from Tina Caddell, Tina Cruz, Beryl Belling, Charlotte Brino, Toby Amiston, James Willer. To note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Anyone? No. Minutes to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on 24th of May 2022 are a true and accurate record. Everyone happy with those? Yeah. To receive report on items from the last minutes not already on the agenda.
The only thing that I've put there is the response I received from our county councillor after contacting her about meal vouchers for children and the bar's cutting, so that's her response.
Chairman's report. Thursday, the 26th of May, I attended the Jubilee party of the U3A. This was well attended and a lot of thought had gone into decorating the Watten Community Christian Centre and the commemorative hats that they'd made. Friday, the 27th of May, I attended the Mayor of Thetford Civic Reception. Sunday, the 29th of May, it was the Mayor of Thetford Civic Service. Then we come to the Jubilee long weekend. Thursday, the 2nd, at two o'clock, the town crier Mike Webb started it off with the proclamation by the clock tower. This was followed at nine thirty with the lighting of the beacon at Loch Neaton. Friday, the 3rd, I was invited to the Mayor of Haverhill's Queen Jubilee Church service, and this was held at St Mary's Church, Haverhill. Saturday, the 4th, after Mike had done his cry, started off the Hundredth Park Run at the Sports Centre. Then from midday onwards, I was at the Platinum Picnic at the Charlotte Harvey Centre. And I would at this point like to thank Sue Dent, council staff, and all the councillors who worked so hard to make sure everything went off without a hitch. Saturday, the 11th, I attended the reopening of the Dragonfly Centre. That's the end of my report. Vice Chairman's report.
Chair, 26th of May, I attended the HR Committee. On the 2nd of June, I attended for the town cry and then the beacon lighting. Fourth of June, I attended the Town's Platinum Picnic in the park. On the 9th of June, I filled in or represented the Mayor of Private Blessing at Loch Neaton for the bereaved families of patients at Thorpe House. On the 11th of June, I also attended the exhibition launch at the Wayland Gallery.
4.3, Clark's report.
I don't think I've got any more to add than is already in the report. We have the new contracts of cleaning the toilets and I believe all's going well. Perhaps back that up. The Legionello risk assessment we've had undertaken on the building here, there will be some things I think we'll need to look at when we get that report through. Staffing, we are the cleaner that Charlotte Harvey Trust has handed in her notice, so that's something we've got to think about. And the update from Burkitts is that the registration of Loch Neaton is with Land Registry and it's just now waiting for that to go through.
Thank you. Point five, public participation, and we've got here to include an update from the Watten and Sam Flood Action Group, but is it going to be put through to the next meeting?
Yes, Liz did say if we could put her report on the agenda for the next meeting, she will be here to talk and update on that.
Thank you. Yes, Catherine? It's not on here? No? That's all right. So as we haven't got the Watten and Sam Flood Group report, public participation, is there anything you would like to mention? No? Point six, to note HR minutes from the HR Committee meeting held on May the 26th, 2022. Is everyone happy and read those? Yeah. Point seven, finance, 7.1 to consider donation application received from the Wayland Partnership Development Trust, which was attached to the thing. And I can see some movement. Has anybody got any questions on it that they might like to put to David or Bronwyn? Catherine?
This is probably a how long is a piece of string question, but do you know what sort of time scale we could be talking about from going through this now to possible completion? We took out a five-year plan, maybe? If it goes to levelling up successfully, it has to be completed by 20 March, is it, 2029? As quick as that? Yes, it's quick.
Any other questions?
Yes, the application has to be in from Breckland Council on 6th of July. We are still awaiting to hear whether or not we've prioritised for that application. You should hear very shortly about that. But it has to be said, we've been able to pull together a team of professional advisors, which includes architects, the co-fully architects, the fancy engineers, and surveyors, charlatans, recent surveyors, as well as project managers, to put in a bit that meets all the standards, particularly the benefit cost ratio, which is actually set at four. The Breckland threshold is 2.2 for this project, we're talking about benefit cost ratio of 4.2, so very readily meet the criteria for the key indicator. Yes, that's right. And then there's probably only a 10% chance of award being given to Breckland, to the project. So this is a stepping stone. We've used the levelling up fund as a reason to, if you like, and as a means of pulling everything together. And even if we don't get funding, the levelling up fund, we will be in a position where we can go after other types of funds and grants, other potential investors. So we, it is, it is as long as a piece of string. There are lots of bits of information in various stages that can be brought together through other consultations and so on. But we have brought sufficiently together to convince Breckland that we have the team and the information, the warrant and application. They just have to make that decision as to whether we are prioritising.
Okay, Peter?
I'm presuming then, from what you said a little bit earlier on, that if we were to give you this donation, it would go towards, I understand what you said in your, in the application, towards getting the rights, surveys and things done. But if Breckland didn't accept it, or you didn't get the levelling up fund, whatever we put in to help you would then be used to obtain other grants. So it wouldn't be, here's £5,000, it didn't work, thank you very much, and that's an end to it. No, okay.
And if we can just give you an example of one of the things that we need the information for, that we need to pay for to get legal advice, is on the, because Wayland House belongs to the Wayland Partnership, any demolition and then reconstruction of the building may be at a zero rate for VAT. And but we have to have an opinion on that, a legal opinion on that, to be sure. And that, it means that the £5,000 we're putting in potentially now, a few thousand of that could leverage essentially 1.6 million of grant support for this construction. So, you know, we've put a massive impact of a relative.
Thank you. Yes, Catherine?
I'd like to propose that we accept the submission for the application.
Have I got a second?
£5,000.
All those in favour?
Good luck.
Yes.
Chair, can I just ask one other question? Have, in order, you've got to go to Breckland, are our district councillors supporting your application with Breckland?
Absolutely categorically, yes.
Yes, Keith?
If I'd answered on that one, as the district councillor, I did receive, you know, all the stuff and asked a reply, which I did obviously to fully support you. So, yeah, I know the other, I know the other two did as well. I'd see you.
Thank you. Thank you. Then we move on to 7.2, to consider the donation grant application received from Watten Loch Neaton Bowls Club. Has anybody got any questions on that? Yes, Catherine?
It's not a question, I was going to suggest that we support this because I don't think the Loch Neaton Bowls Club have ever asked anybody for anything. It's a very old, traditional club, and I think it's given a lot of pleasure to a lot of people. And I just think it's, it's the right sort of thing to ask for, you know, the small grants. So I would support that.
Yes, Pat?
Just a small observation. I totally agree with what Catherine said, but I'm kind of happy to give them the money, but I wish they were spending it on something sensible rather than a bunch of flowers.
Yes, Keith, Stan?
Madam Chair, I'm really pleased that it makes Pat happy. And in that case, it would make me happy to propose that we go ahead and make this donation grant.
A second. Jane? All those in favour? It's carried again. Right, 7.3, to agree the payment of additional expenditure related to the Platinum Picnic event. Yes, Catherine?
Can I just point out that there's, there's one figure on the grid that we've had that is incorrect. For the face paint, it says 50 and it should actually say 80. And in addition to that, when we talked at the events meeting, we felt it would be appropriate to make a donation of £50 also to Loch Neaton in respect of the beacon lighting.
Okay.
So really, I'm proposing that we accept that with those additions, so we accept the grid of additional expenses.
Yes, done. Thank you. All those in favour? It's carried again. Section eight, to revisit flagpole location for Watten Town Centre.
This was something Charlotte actually asked to be put on the agenda, and as she's not here, I don't know how you want to proceed with that, actually.
And I think with that, you enclose the details of where we discussed before. Highways have been out, and I have discussed with Jane earlier. They don't want flagpoles by any highways, so we're a bit limited as to where, if anywhere you could have one. Yes, Pat?
How close is the highway? I mean, like, if you were talking about Memorial, is that too close?
I think it would be. Well, Matt Lyons spoke to me again this afternoon, because I just rang him to clarify it, and he certainly was against it. Anywhere that the pole fell, it would go on the highway.
So... I also think, sorry, that now that we've got these flagpoles down the high street, if we have one, we're able to put one somewhere in the high street, find a place, we're just going to look like we're a town full of flagpoles. And initially, we wanted the flagpole because we didn't have anything, and now we've got ones down the high street, albeit that the flags are twisting round them, but... Yes, Keith?
A few years ago, we used to have one on the clock tower, up on the top, coming out, and hung a flag from there. I believe it was considered unsafe at the time. I don't know whether, if it was properly affixed now, it might be able to do that because it did actually hang the flags. You know, we hung our Watten flag and our Provence flag and other flags there. It did seem to work.
I think when we did have that looked at, sorry, Stan, when we had Alan come out from Norse and we sort of passed him with looking at that location or even on this building, he didn't feel either would be suitable. He spent probably an awful lot of money anyway. And then we have access issues that we've got to address first, I think, to get anybody to look at.
Yes, Stan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having recently visited the clock tower, I think the flagpole Keith's talking about is still in there, and I don't know if you'll agree with me, Anne, it's basically, it's a handrail for a flag, it's not fit for purpose. It is, do forgive me, Keith and others, but it is typically NFN. And I think that we, we have to consider safety of everybody, not just councillors and those accessing the tower, but those that it's going to land on. And also, if you look at the capola on the tower, it's unlikely to be able to substantiate the fixing and the torque tolerance required of a flagpole. So whilst that'd be a lovely idea, I think practicalities have put something else that way from the clock towers and on starter. But then I'm not a surveyor.
Yes, Peter?
Chair, I agree with you, I think. Trying to get something down the high street now with all the other flagpoles, I think it's pointless exercise. And you're not going to get anything round by the Memorial. The Queen's Hull Flyer flag, if the council desperately want one, stick it down at the Charlotte Harvey then. That's not on high street, you could put a flag, if you want a flag up, you could do it there, and it's not going to affect anything else. It's a question of, if you want to put one up, do you want everybody to see it, or do you just want the ability to put a flag up somewhere?
Yes, Catherine. To be honest, I feel a little bit of a loss with this because I don't see the point of having a flagpole that people can't see. And from that point of view, the Memorial Car Park along with the Memorial would have been the right sort of place for it. So I don't really understand why highways has this problem with it. The only other thing that I thought of was maybe we should be looking at this as part of the possible pedestrianisation of the middle street area, if that ever comes to fruition.
Stan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, going to be a bit radical here. Highways went, let us put a flagpole up in the Memorial Car Park. When would we really use it? We'd definitely use it on Remembrance Sunday, so why don't we get a portable flagpole that you set up, you hoist the flag up, you have your service, you bring it down, take it away. They make them for that very purpose.
Yeah. So would anybody be in favour of getting Jane to inquire about the cost of a portable flag? Yes, Catherine?
Just so we've got it properly minuted then. Stan's proposed that we look into the cost and possibility of having a portable flagpole, and I'd like to second it.
Okay, all those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Section nine, to consider allocation of an allotment area for use by Watten cadets.
So this, this was sort of originally voiced back in March, and obviously, with the years progressing, the cadets are quite anxious to move forward with this. I contacted the office so that they get some preparatory work done for this meeting, and they've come up sterling with even a little, a little picture. This looks like the kind of thing that the cadets are after, a small area that they can do their whatever, winter veg or seasonal veg, whatever they're doing. So that, that looks fine to me because I get the impression they would rather have something sooner than later. Essentially, they want to go, the staff there want to go down and have a look at it first, they want to know. So, so there's a great little guideline. I do see here it's put on, or they could skip the waiting list or get a priority allocation. I don't know, I didn't ask for that, but it's an interesting alternative option. It depends what other councillors think. I mean, looking at this, I think this is the blue arrowed area on the illustration, probably would suit them quite fine. Having, having looked at this and hearing what other councillors think, obviously I'd go back to them, you know, if they want to go and have a look, or if there's a counter proposal about skipping the waiting list. So really, what do councillors, councillors think of this? Thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to ask, how long is the waiting list, first of all?
We have quite a few people waiting, I must admit, and I don't think any vacancies will come up perhaps this year, apart from the one we currently have. So this is, we haven't put that one out there and left it until after tonight's meeting, but we do have, I think, at least eight people on the list, so.
That area highlighted in the photograph was originally for disabled people, but we haven't had any applications. Is, is the area highlighted one allotment or two allotments?
I don't think it's allotment size, actually, and I think if the cadets decided they didn't want the whole area, then that wouldn't be a problem. It would be able to at least just allocate part of that.
All right, well, can I then move on? If they're interested in it, it's never been used as an allotment, has it? So I think what we'd want to know from Keith would be, would, would they be able to turn the surface over, or would they, if they were unable to do so, would they like to ask the town council whether they could get the contractor to rotavate it further?
Oh, well, I'd have to take that back to the cadets, ask them. I think they were looking really for a sort of small area. I don't know whether they would necessarily use all of that area that's illustrated. I would think, without having a further in-depth conversation with them, that they probably would do it themselves, but I don't want to speak to, I'll have a word with them and just mention those very important points that you have raised and see what they say.
Yeah, I think with that, the fact that it hasn't been rotavated, they would need some heavier machinery than just a fork and digging it over by hand. So, you know, that, that contractor's got all of those machines, and it would be a...
The town? No, I wouldn't ask it to do it, sorry.
Well, I do know somebody with a rotavator, who's always on about using their rotavator. But equally, Keith, if you want to say to them, that's the land that we have, how much would they be interested in having? And we could perhaps come to some arrangement with that. Yes, Pat?
It's as much as anybody would want to take on, really, Pat, or whether we do say, well, let's leave some in case we get any disabled applicants in the future, maybe we should think about that, but other than that, that sort of piece is spare land.
Anything that we can do for the cadets, I'd be all in favour because they do such a good job, and I'd like to keep them to keep the momentum going. Yes, Keith?
Thank you. With my sort of semi-gardening hat on, I would suggest it was rotavated first so that they can actually get into the ground. Just because it's been rotavated doesn't mean to say it's ready to plant. That's just the first thing, really, to break it up, and then it's, then it would need turning, digging and getting ready to plant anything in the autumn. It'd still be time to get something in in the autumn.
Yes, Stan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, just to be clear, are we saying that tonight is agreed that they can have that plot of land, and Keith can go back and say, we have got an allotment for you? Am I right in understanding that? Right. Secondly, with regard to keeping a reserve for a person with a disability to use, would it not be better that if we're going to have that land tilled, to have it all done, give the cadets a full use of that land? And if and when the need arises for a person with a disability, then the understanding and arrangement with the cadets be that we reclaim that section for the person to use? Because if, if we've never yet had a person with a disability make the requirement, that land could sit fallow for another 20 years.
I can understand what you're saying, but if the cadets have planted and are growing stuff in section, that we then say, well, we want that bit back because there's somebody with a disability that wants it, then either they're going to lose the crop that they've done there, or they're going to have to wait another season. And I'm looking at Keith because he's about to say something gardening-wise, yes, Keith?
No, it's just that if, if the whole lot was rotavated and the cadets were told, you start this end, do what you want, if somebody did come along and they were using the whole plot, or they weren't, then it'd be a perfect opportunity for the cadets to assist somebody else who wasn't able to do certain things there, where they could work in together as a community thing.
Yeah. I was going to suggest the same thing, I think if you say to them, you can have that plot of land, you might not want to use all of it, but part of it, or half of it, is used for disabled people, but you can use that if you're willing to help, if someone disabled comes along and wants to use it, you help them with it.
I think that would be perfectly acceptable, actually, because they, you know, they do emphasise community-based work, just that... Just out of interest, they've done very, very well. Individual cadets and as a whole unit have been involved in many things since the last meeting and they've won lots of awards and they've had lots of commendations. The list is probably too big to go on particularly specifically to an issue of the land. But they're doing very, very well and they are a credit to the cadet movement as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. So can I propose then that we say to Keith, do say to the cadets, this is the land that we have available? Are you happy to do that rather than skip onto the waiting list? Do that as a proposal to put that forward to the cadets, having the whole lot rotated to start with and then they can
Find them they want it.
Find them they want it. Yeah.
They'd go down and look at it, but as this is the only option, I think they'll go for it. Obviously I can't necessarily speak for them. I will bring it up with them. My impression would be yes, they could go for it. But I will mention that proviso as well, which I think would be sort of perfectly in keeping with the kind of ethos that they have. That if disabled people wanted to use it, they could work with them to till.
All those in favour? Okay, Keith? Item 10, to agree inclusion within the Norfolk County Council bid into the local electric vehicle infrastructure fund to pay for a number of new electric vehicle charging points across the county. Yes, Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I did send an email on this. I think we should very much get involved. I think it says there about they want to do it along the coast and the broughs to encourage tourism. But also they include the A and B class road network. Now, we are at the junction, crossroads of an A and B roads and the A1075 is part of the route to the coast. And we have the perfect place to put it because one of the things is it's got to be easily found. Well, the perfect place would be on Breckman's Car Park at the Queen's Hall. So that to me, they've literally just got to turn off, there's a charging point on the road and back on again. So I think we should put in for this and suggest to Breckman that maybe it could be cited on their car park, but not as one of their charging points to get away with. Away with that, we still want the Breckman ones in the town as well. But I think that'd be a perfect place for one.
Aside from that for a moment, is there any news on them giving us? Yes, Pat? Yes, Keith?
Just like to support this because personally I think that electric vehicles are the way forward. Up on the Leighton Business Park, they've got, I think they're called electric wheels. And it's interesting just to see how it all works. They've got everything from little buggy sort of vehicles to small buses. And it's just very sort of interesting just to see how the whole setup works. So again, I think that's a great idea and I think we should support it.
Does nobody remember the milk floats?
Well, funnily enough, I did come up with this.
Well, Chair, I was going to say that at one point this country had more electric vehicles than anywhere else in the world and there were milk floats. Haven't we gone backwards?
So item 10, can I ask those in favour of inclusion? Yeah, okay, let's carry them, Jane. Item 11, to decide distribution of platinum jubilee lamppost plaques. Yes, Stan?
Yeah. I have two suggestions. One of them is that we could take five pounds each back for them. That's what they cost. But whilst I'm not suggesting that should be put back into the council coffers, rather put to the mayor's charity. Or perhaps consider as the town mayor, awarding them to people during the platinum year for something, if firing from the hip, you're making a recognition for someone's community service, perhaps a cadet's, that could be part of it. Give them that with a certificate. Just a thought.
Jane?
Will they be fit to give out? They're the ones you've got up. What I meant was with rain and things, they haven't, they're up.
Okay. Fine. My thoughts would possibly be to give one each to the army and air force cadets and possibly the schools so that they've actually got one and one to the museum. Yes, Keith?
Yeah, I'm wondering if they're that special. I mean, there must be millions of them around the country. Anybody who would have wanted one could have bought one. So to actually say, well done, you've won a prize. Here's a platinum jubilee plaque, I think I'd be, oh, thank you very much.
Yes, Catherine. I understand what Keith's saying, but in terms of history, they have the place. And I do like Sue's idea of giving the army cadets, the air force cadets and the schools and the museum one. I don't know whether you'd go further and give them to the charities like, oh, I don't know where Leighton would put one. But I do like the idea of giving them, yeah, I do like the idea of giving them to those bodies.
I just think if you go too far afield, so like the charities, there's an awful lot of charities in the area. Maybe we could just donate one to Charlotte Harvey to put somewhere.
Yeah.
Because that is part of within town council. As for the rest, well, we could store them for as and when people have asked about them. But I don't think we would be looking at recouping funds that we've paid out for them.
Do you want to make any charge if people ask or just for donation to the mayor's charity? I think that's what we'd like.
Yes, Catherine.
Could I make another suggestion? That as Sue suggested, we could give one to the army cadets, the air force cadets, the schools, the museum, Charlotte Harvey. And then at the festive market, we raffle the others. Have them on the tombola.
But they're not being awarded, Pat, aren't we? We are donating them to them for historical providence. Yeah. No, I think that's a nice idea. We would then solve any problems as to what we, we don't really want to store them because they're not going to be of any use to us in the future. Yes, Catherine.
So my proposal would be that we give one to the army cadets, the air force cadets, the schools, the museum, Charlotte Harvey. We keep one here, the town hall, and the rest are raffled at the service market. Yes, the museum, yeah.
Yeah, I would second that. Those in favour? Can I ask the town operative to carefully take all the others down for us? Thank you. Yes, Pat?
Just a thought, I'm now forgotten what I was going to say. You took too long. Don't matter.
Right. Item 12 is the planning. Can I pass that over to you, Jane?
We could claim not to be involved. There's quite a lot on here, but it's quite quick really. 12.1, 3 DC 2022, 0138 DOC, former officers' mess, Portal Avenue, discharge of condition. That is to do with the flood and water management on the site. I've read the reports and they make no sense to me. So what I would suggest is that we check with the flood action group and see if they're submitting anything because they're going to have a lot more detail and knowledge of how the report should cover everything, especially considering the report they put forward about what they've been doing. And then support their comments if they put one in, if everyone's happened with that.
All right, yeah.
The next one is 12.2, 3 PM 2022, 013 DOC, 110 High Street, prior approval for change of use of shop to dwelling, schedule two, blah, 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 use classes order. Now, I normally would really get angry about this, another shop changed to a dwelling. However, in this case, I think that it's so divorced from the rest of the properties. It's right on that end piece. Yeah, they're right on that corner. There's residential dwellings between it and any part of even, you know, the links bit of the High Street. And there are only a couple of takeaways out there. And I know that the owners have been trying to think of all different uses. They tried to get a takeaway and that fell through. Will be one another takeaway. I can't really see that there's an issue with it. So I had put down my thoughts and what we could put as an objection and I'll see what you think. While the town council would normally raise objections to the loss of a commercial unit in the High Street, in this instance, the property is well divorced from the run of retail outlets by intervening residential properties. The town council does not therefore object to the proposal, but it does not necessarily support it. There are concerns about possible parking issues and bin storage which concern the town council and they asked a case officer to seek to address these issues, possibly by the imposition of appropriate condition. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, because there's no parking. So there is no parking at all in the plan in the place.
Well, there is a gate behind the back, which you can get in there, but I don't know whether they're going to do that. But there's, they might put a condition that person doesn't have a car.
Is that one of the big extractor firms we're going to go to?
Yes, that's the one. That's the one.
Yes, Stan?
Yeah, when Peter and I were playing gate guards last week, somebody actually opened that gate and I think it's purely a delivery access. I don't think you could get a modern vehicle in there.
Okay, so we go to 12.3, 3 PL 2022, 0408, two Kingfisher Way, removal of existing conservatory, replacement with single story rear extension to form a new garden room. I've got no comments as anybody else. 12.4, 3 PL 2022, 0398 F, proposed sightings of six mobile homes on the land for occupation by members of staff for a temporary period. It's amendments elevation of mobile homes received. I've looked at it. I don't think it answers any of the questions that we had. The previous objection that we put in was, Watton Town Council feels this to be an overdevelopment at the site and a cramped layout. There is no clarity to the size of mobile homes and no indication as to the number of residents who may be on site and associated vehicle movements on the mainland. Nor is there any clarification as to what temporary means. If BDC is minded to grant permission, perhaps conditions can be included to restrict the number of residents and vehicles. The permission is granted, it should be for a stated time, with a condition that home should then be removed and the land reinstated. I can't see anything in the plans that answers any of those issues. So I would suggest that we just reiterate our previous, say that there's no new information that raises any of our fears and that we reiterate our previous comments. Yep. Okay. Then we go to 12.6, discharge of conditions, 62, oh, it's DC 2022, 0144 DOC. It's a discharge of condition relating to specs on the building, the access and soakaways. I've got no comments on it. Oh, I missed that. Accretory square. Can we just decide whether we want comments on that one? Nobody got anything? Right. I thought I'd missed something out there. 12.5, 3 PL 2022, 0454 HOU, single story front extension to allow for porch, rest, cupboard and WC, 378 Accretory Square. It's amended. Permission has been granted, but there's nothing on the changes that they've put in that raises any concerns. We've made no comment last time.
Not so that we have got that anyway.
Yeah, it's not a real issue. Then we go to 12.7, 3 PL 2022. Yes?
Haven't there been issues with that one before about the, is that one with the agricultural?
No. Not to my recognition. There was nothing about agricultural access. It was
Is that the one that's got, they've already cut out an access on dealer mode? I'm not quite sure what that followed up on. Do you know what I mean?
I think it's, the land has been separated off.
Okay.
And that's the other bit. Because that's already got an access. Do you remember there was two accesses? It was a late application that came in and we didn't get a chance to comment on it.
Yeah.
So from what I can see, it's the other bit of the land. It's some extension, some sort of stuff being it's the conditions. It just says the specs that they've submitted and the access and the soakaway. So that can't be the access because it would be what permission was for.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that was a prior approval, if I remember correctly. You happy with that?
Yeah, that's fine, sir.
Okay. We go on to 12.7, 3 PL 2022, 0636 HOU, construction of a garage block in the rear garden for storage of a private car collection for St Mary's Close. Now, I've had a look at the site plan. It's quite a large site. I don't see that it's going to be a problem for anyone. But I did have concerns about the fact that they need to restrict it by condition. If we say privately, it looks like it's clear for storage of private collection. It doesn't say whose private collection. It doesn't say whether it's connected with the dwelling. So is that, does that leave in future a vague area which could be subject to which means that they can store other people's cars? So I was going to ask for a condition restricting it to be connected with the dwelling on the site, unless anybody else wants to add a comment. Yep, okey doke. And we go to 12.8, 3 DC 2022, 0152 DOC, land north of Norwich Road, Watton. That's to do with archaeological and trenching details. And as I know nothing about the archaeological and trenching details, I'm assuming there'll be an expert officer that will do. Anyone got any comments on that? But they're beyond me. It's too technical for me. So I don't think we've got anyone with them.
I think an awful lot of what's in the report is based on historical documentation that exists around Watton because you can see things being quoted which are documented already. They've relied quite heavily on the Norfolk heritage sites. So they've used a good basis of knowledge. I was a bit concerned when it said there's no building predating 1674 in Watton, which there is, but that's a minor, it's a minor point in terms of the site itself, I think. They look as if they've done a fairly thorough piece of work.
They did like a desktop survey from
I think it's desktop.
Yeah.
Because they quote so many sources.
Source references. Yeah, I thought it was that. So no one got any additional comments to that? Okay, so that's me done.
Item 13, to pass the resolution to exclude the press and public to consider market matters.